Good evening. I'll call this meeting of the Cartersville City Council to order if you will please stand for our invocation and pledge.
Good evening, everyone. Let us pray. Father in heaven, once again, all three of your humble servants join together collectively to do the business of the city. We ask for wisdom and guidance and understanding for decisions that's made tonight. We ask these blessings and our blessings in your son, Jesus' name. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Director, please.
Carrie Hodge, Ward 1. Jay Step, Ward 2.
Here.
Carrie Roth, Ward 3.
Here.
Calvin Cooley, Ward 4.
Here.
Gary Fox, Ward 5.
Here.
Taff Ren, Ward 6.
Here.
Thank you. Julia, first order of business is the approval of our council meeting minutes from July 15th. Council, you've had these minutes presented to you well in advance of tonight's meeting, had an opportunity to lift them over, now would be a chance to make any edits if there are none of motions in order.
Make a motion to approve the minutes?
Second. All in favor to Kate, by saying aye?
Aye.
Minutes are approved unanimously. Mr. Hardigre, get us started off this evening, please, sir.
Sir, Mr. Mayor, this first item on the agenda for historic preservation is the reappointment of Vandy White for a three-year term. She has agreed to serve for another term.
Thank you. Questions for David on this item? Questions, comments, or motions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to Kate, by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. COP 21-18. Mr. Hardigre.
Yes, sir. This is actually a case the HBC reviewed in the month of July. There were several elements to the COP review of this. They approved all the items but the one item for painted brick. The applicant, Ms. Andrea Wallace, who's here tonight, wanted to paint the entire house. You can tell from the picture that it is a tan-colored brick on all four sides. The ordinance, as it reads right now currently says, "Unpainted brick is not to be painted." It says that in two different sections. And that was a change that council had asked us to implement a couple of years ago after a previous unpainted brick came before you. So we made that change. We tied it to approving a hardship. Ms. Wallace stated a hardship with mold and algae growing on the brick and being a maintenance issue. HBC disagreed, so ultimately, HBC did deny her request to paint the unpainted brick. Ms. Wallace has appealed that decision. It's before you tonight to have the discussion to see if she'd be allowed to paint the brick. Most of the information that's... all the information she provided to us has been included. We are packing it tonight for the appeal.
Okay. Thank you. Questions for David at this point? Thank you. Mr. Archer, do you have any kind words of direction before we get started on this? Or we just open it up and go?
Allow, though. Anyone in full of their field to speak? Anyone opposed to the field to speak? Ask questions? Have discussion? Vote.
Thank you. All right. Go on, Ms. Wallace. And if you would, your name and your address for our clerk, even though she's already got it.
Okay.
You can adjust it to where it's at.
Andrea Wallace, 15 Caswell Road. So this is the second time I've asked permission. The first time, I strictly wanted to do it for cosmetic reasons, and I still want to do it for cosmetic reasons. I think painted homes are beautiful. I see them in our town, right down the road from me, Shropshire's House, to me, one of the most beautiful homes in our city. But in addition, and in Atlanta, I see them all over Atlanta, historic homes. Since that time, and so it was my understanding that we didn't allow it because paint suffocates the brick, does not allow the brick to breathe. And so I understand that. You don't want to damage the historic home. So I did my homework and have done it, you know, for a while, and I have found two products. There may be more. One called Roma Bio, which I think is in your packet. They partner with Boral Brick Company. My builder said, you know, that he's done a number of homes in Atlanta, Cory Coat, with that paint. It allows the brick to breathe. It is not like a latex paint or oil-based paint of any kind. It's mold-resistant. It lasts 20 years. And so it's not... it's not... I'm not saying it's protecting the brick, but it does in a way because it, you know, it inhibits the mold growth and, you know, helps with the element part of it. We have never pressure washed that brick, but it is very pitted. Like it just... it looks like someone has just chiseled it all over. Also, I don't know if the cracks were in your packet. There's just a lot of significant cracks in the front and around the house that you see from the settling. We're not going to neglect and have never neglected anything about the house. We always fix everything we can, but only so much can be fixed that doesn't make it almost look worse or as bad as it did before. You just can't make it look original. So we feel like, you know, painting it would just make it look beautiful. We're building a stone wall in front. We're going to level out the yard, sod it, and, you know, I just think the whole thing will be a nice change for the home and easier to maintain as well.
How does the painting of the brick solve the pitting problem?
That's what I was saying. It doesn't necessarily protect it or solve it, but cosmetically, to try to fix some of the things, like the cracking in the mold and the things. When I talk to the manufacturers, they're like, "It's not going to heal your brick. You can't heal brick." But it definitely, like this... these products permeate the brick. They're not just sitting on top of the brick, suffocating it. So it is a layer, and it does permeate the brick, which is why it lasts, you know, 20 years. So... and I brought a picture, like, we wouldn't paint anything, you know, harsh, just a nice neutral, you know, color, cream or taupe or something like that. And I think, you know, I mean, we don't plan to move, so... and I know you have to look to the future, but, you know, we've invested a lot of money in the home, built a beautiful garage in the back, you know, going to put the wall and sod and, you know, plan even more things. So, I mean, we want to only add to the community. We add to our businesses. We put our own money into everything that we have, and we try to make everything top-notch. So that's why I don't doubt that these products are a heck of a lot more expensive than just regular paint. And, you know, if it ever changes in the Historic Committee or whatever, I don't think it's unreasonable to say if you paint, you have to use, you know, these approved products because we are protecting, you know, we are protecting these properties. And so that's why, you know, I wanted to make sure that I used something that did not damage the brick.
Any other questions?
And just a note, another product is called Nawkaw. I didn't send the information on that, but you can look it up. It's N-A-W-K-A-W. They're based out of Athens, and it's the same type of product. This Roma Bio partners with Boral Brick Company. Nawkaw actually has received Main Street Restoration Awards for all of the work that they have done, painting, I guess you call it, bricks of historic buildings and homes in historic districts in Georgia, so...
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Anybody else wishing to speak on the topic may do so at this time? And seeing none, I will close this portion of the proceedings and turn it over to council.
I'd like to make a motion to approve allowing the Wallaces to paint their brick.
Have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor to Kate, by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, like aye?
No.
So motion carries four to one. Next item, Mr. Reinhardt, you're up.
I'm a mayor and council. I bring before to you tonight two letters of audit engagement. The first letter is for the MEAG questionnaire. The MEAG questionnaire basically is a questionnaire that the MEAG sends us. It's a two-part questionnaire. Part is filled out by Electric Department, part is filled out by the Finance Department. The audit firm reviews what the Finance Department fills out, makes any questions or makes any corrections to it, actually, basically asks questions. The second letter of engagement is for the annual 2021 audit, along with a single audit. The single audit is due to the city expenditures, federal grant expenditures exceeding $750,000. The MEAG questionnaire will cost around $3,500 to $5,000. Single audit will cost about $9,000, and the 2021 audit cost will be about $62,000. The letters attached indicate the expectations of the city, along with the expectations of Molly and Jenkins, basically what they're going to do or what the city will be doing, providing records and so forth and so on. I recommend your approval on both of these letters in order for the audit firm to move on when it is appropriate, and also ask that the mayor, the city manager, and the finance director sign both letters.
Thank you. Any questions on this item? And if not, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
That motion means the signing of both of those documents.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
My second does the...
Thank you. All in favor to Kate, by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Chair will entertain a motion to add four items to the agenda.
So move. Second.
All in favor to Kate, by saying aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Four items are added. Go ahead, Tom.
First item is the first reading of the...
And I'm sorry, Tom. I know you had... this is that... you did have copies of this for the media folks that are here.
Yes.
Thank you.
First item is for the first reading of the city of Carisville millage rate to be set at 2.91 mills. This is... exceeds the rollback rate of 2.785 mills. Basically, basically, it sparks the city having to hold three public hearings. The first public hearing is August the 12th at 5:00 PM. Second public hearing is August 19th at 8:00 AM, and the third one is August 19th at 7:00 PM at our next council meeting. Again, this is the first reading of these, and again, hopefully, we'll be able to approve these on the meeting of August the 19th.
Okay. That was for the city of Caris. Can we have him go through all of them and just do one motion to approve all four of those? Continue.
Well, there's no approval on... this is his first reading.
Okay.
Second item will be, again, first reading for the Carisville Business Improvement District or the bid. This is used by the downtown business district. The owners have been self-assessing in property tax for many years and using it in the downtown area. The current... I'm sorry, the 2021 millage rate is scheduled to be set at 1.233 mills. This is the rollback rate, and we'll be, again, voting on it on the second meeting in August. Third item to add, again, is the first reading. This is on the general obligation, Parks and Recreation Property Tax, to be set at .713 mills. This, if you remember, the citizens of Carisville approved a referendum in November 2014, authorizing the city to issue bonds to be used to pay for renovations and improvements to the Parks and Recreation Department. Basically, it's a 10-year bond payback. The millage rate is, again, to be set at 7... .713 mills. The rollback rate is .73... 7 mills. The current proposed millage rate is below the actual rollback rate. And the fourth item to add, again, is the first reading of the Carisville City School System. Carisville City School System is recommended by their board to adopt the 2021 rollback rate of 13.906 mills. The city council approves the city school board's recommendation for the tax millage rate for the citizens, and the property taxes collected are used solely by the Carisville City School System. Again, this... hopefully, we'll be able to approve this at the second council meeting in August.
Okay. Thank you. Questions for Mr. Reinhardt on this? Thank you, sir.
Thank you for letting me at him.
Mr. Hampton, you've got the next item, please, sir.
Good evening, mayor and council. This agenda item is basically a contract for us to enter into a power purchasing agreement with MEAG for a solar generation project. This is a... one thing I didn't bring up earlier is we've had some of our industrial customers reach out to us, and they're being pressured by their customers to basically generate all or a portion of their power by green energy. And so they've been reaching out to us, and we did not have a means to address this issue. So with this solar generation project, that will help us to satisfy them as well. But also for the city, it's a good way to diversify our portfolio with more green energies, no out-of-pocket costs for us, and it's cheaper than any of our other current generation sources that we have now. So from Keith, or has reviewed the contracts and approved everything on it. If you have any other questions, hopefully, I can answer them for anybody. We do recommend approval.
Any questions for Mr. Hampton on this?
Come on, Carrie. I know you've got one, Carrie. I got a... I got a...
Can you please repeat all that stuff in the work session? Let's not do that. If there's no questions, chair, I'll entertain a motion.
Much to approve. Second.
All in favor to Kate, by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Stay right there, Derek, because you've got another item. We'll go ahead and handle that while you're standing here. If you're ready.
Yeah, I'll go ahead and do that. The second one is our annual electric system trimming contract, which is the annual deal we do to keep all of our lines trimmed. We have, you know, a couple Sundays back, I think it was three Sundays ago, we had a storm come through. With all this rain we've been getting, everything is growing up, so we really need to get them going. So basically, we're using the same contract that we used last year. We're able to negotiate a cheaper price for them going forward this year to maintain what we paid last year instead of seeing an increase. It was with Trees Unlimited out of Cave Springs. This is a budgeted expense, and we do recommend approval.
First of all, mayor, I'd like to thank Derek, continue going after and renegotiating this contract and saving the city money and getting more, basically, trees trimmed every year because of that savings.
And just out of my own curiosity, I went and kind of figured out what the difference would be, but we were saving by the negotiated prices of about $27,000 to $30,000.
That's great. Thank you.
So, just because I was curious. I'm a nerd.
Just because it made you look good, right? Thank you. Any questions on this item? If not, a motion's in order.
Make a motion to approve. Second.
All in favor to Kate, by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Reed, you're up next.
Good evening, mayor and council. I am here to request creation of a festival zone for an event that is being held by the Ingles corporate office. They are wanting to bring a concert to Cartersville over Labor Day weekend, which is September 4th. The festival zone would just be for our amphitheater and plaza area, so no road closures, no parking lot closures, no impacts otherwise.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Reed on this item? If there are none of motions in order?
Make a motion to approve. Second.
All in favor to Kate, by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Mr. Forsyth, you are up. You've got the next three.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor and council. This is... first item is a contract with the Georgia Environmental Protection Division Laboratory, Drinking Water Laboratory, for their annual... for our annual testing of the drinking water. We've done this several years now. They've held the price constant at $9,200, is based on the population of Cartersville. Recommend your approval of that.
Okay. Questions, comments, or motions?
Motion to approve. Second.
All in favor to Kate, by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next item.
Yes, sir. This is... this has to do with the Center Road Drinking Water Storage Tank. It's a 3 million gallon tank at 423 Center Road, originally built by Bartow County Water System in 2001. It was taken over by the city in 2007. However, in that transaction, we failed to transfer the Georgia Power Bill over to the city. We've reviewed those bills from 2007 till present, and both the city and county accounts payable, and the water departments have reviewed those, and we believe there is a balance of $12,857.91 owed to Bartow County for that. Recommend approval.
Thank you. Chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve. Second.
All in favor to Kate, by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Last item is a return activated sludge check valves at the Water Pollution Control Plant. Without going into a lot of detail, it's important for these check valves to operate in order for that plant to function as designed. There are 30-inch check valves, larger than me, and they are both in disrepair. We solicited bids and got one responsive bid from Go4 Williamson Incorporated to repair those valves at a cost of $19,620. I am requesting a not-to-exceed amount of $25,000 to repair both of those.
Thank you. Questions for Sidney on this item? If there are none of motions in order?
Make a motion to approve the not-to-exceed cost of $25,000. Second.
All in favor to Kate, by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Sidney. Mr. Sanders. Calm down there, Tim. You'll be up next.
Thank you, mayor and council. We need to purchase 28 dumpsters. The best bid was from Baker Waste for $43,100, and it's a budgeted item.
Questions, comments, or motions?
Motion to approve. Second.
All in favor to Kate, by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Battalion Chief McClung, come on forward.
Mr. Mayor and council, we come before you tonight to respectfully request approval of our firefighter annual clearance letters. Physicals, excuse me. These physicals will occur at Public Safety Headquarters in two phases. Phase one will be the baseline blood draws, weight, BMI, vision, and phase two will be cardiac stress, respiratory function, core strength, and flexibility. In addition, there will be a one-on-one consultation with the physician discussing the results and ways to improve the firefighter's overall safety, health, and wellness. All of this complies with NFPA 1582 and OSHA 1910. Additionally, our hazardous material team members will receive additional lab testing for heavy metals. Beyond the annual testing, they also assist in our return to work, back to duty after an injury or illness. We are seeking to stay with site med and Marietta. Our rates remain the same as they were in fiscal year 2021. Legal has reviewed, and we are asking for up to and not to exceed $26,000, and asking for the mayor to be authorized to sign related documents. This is a budgeted item and below our fiscal year 21, 22 projections.
Thank you. Any questions? If not a motion?
Much to approve. Second.
All in favor to Kate, by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. All right, Dan, take it away.
Yes, sir. Annual membership to Northwest Georgia Regional Commission invoice of $21,760 for your approval.
Motion's in order.
Much to approve. Second.
All in favor to Kate, by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Continue on.
Second quarter Motorola radio invoice from Bartow County for $37,542.13 for your approval.
Motion's in order.
Much to approve. Second.
All in favor to Kate, by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Next, the GDOT has given the airport through federal government funding, three different grants. The one we received last fall, $69,000, 100% funded from the CARES Act funding. I failed to bring that forward to you then. I want to bring that forward tonight, as well as $23,000, which the mayor signed the paperwork earlier this week from the Coronavirus Response and Relief Supplemental Appropriation Act. And additional $59,000 from American Rescue Plan Act will be forthcoming. I just recommend approval for the mayor and city clerk to sign any and all grant-related documents.
Questions, comments, or motions?
Much to approve. Second.
All in favor to Kate, by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Next item, mayor, is a time change for Civic Youth Day, will be occurring on September 16th, so we'll have a morning meeting and need your resolution approved by mayor and council.
Hip, hip, hooray. Motion in order.
I would... quick question. Where... is that the business session or the work session? Business session?
Business session will be at 9:00 AM, and the work session will be 8:00 AM.
Okay. For my clarification. May I make a motion to approve?
Second.
All in favor to Kate, by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. School Board Resolution.
Yes, mayor. This is a continuation. Basically, it's a part of the First Amendment to the Development Agreement that the mayor and council passed previously. This is where the school board has approved that for the Main Street Project, TAD, and as you mentioned in the work session, this is not being supplemented, that the TAD is not supplementing the apartments being developed there at a discounted rate. So I recommend approval of this resolution from the school board.
Thank you. Any discussion? And if not a motion, it's in order.
Much to approve. Second.
All in favor to Kate, by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Morgan.
Good evening, mayor and council. Want to bring before you the surplus vehicle and equipment list, also with an airplane on it, requesting your approval to put those on gov deals and to disperse of those.
Very good. Questions for Freddie on this? If not, a motion's in order?
Much to approve. Second.
All in favor to Kate, by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. You've got tabled items, council. I'll entertain a motion to take those items off the table.
So move. Second.
All in favor to Kate, by saying aye?
Aye.
Items off the table. Ms. Reed.
Thank you all. All right. The first item we have up is a request for approval to pursue the urban geotemporal art installation. So this is something I have had reviewed by our public works director, as well as our Historic Preservation Commission, just to give them the opportunity to comment or give any recommendations. Again, this is a temporary art installation, so these are examples from other cities, not exactly direct reflection of what we would expect to see in Cartersville, specifically as it regards to buildings. Our targeted goals would strictly be any sort of public infrastructure, things that would be appropriate. So I think Annalee has another image there. That's an example of the pieces before they're put together, so this is something that's built to fit the locations that they're in. And so here's an example of a broken planter next to Noble in Maine. We had inquired of the owners whether they would be willing to have something built in a place like this to just amend the maintenance issue. They said they would be willing. Our public works director did not have any concerns, again, because of the temporary nature of the installation and how it is put in there, would still have the option to make any regular repairs if needed. to make any regular repairs if needed.
How long are these installations expected to be?
Yeah. According to the artist, it could be a duration, so about a six-month life where they still look good. She says some people get excited and try to take them home just as a souvenir, so we may see some loss just strictly because of that, but I would expect six to eight months. We would just make sure to take them down at the point that they started looking dilapidated or weathered.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? And are you just, you, we need to vote on this or you're just wanting, what are you wanting?
The thing that I didn't want to have happen is for this to show up and y'all get a question and you not know a thing about it. So I wanted to bring it for you for an opportunity to comment, ideally to give me a, hey, we'll give you the chance to go ahead and, and if it's terrible, you know, I am here. You let me know, we'll get it taken care of. But I think this will be a successful, tasteful, and, and well-managed project, so.
All right. I'll make the first to vote on it if you don't have to. All right. City attorney has made a motion to.
I make a motion to approve that we allow the art.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay.
All right. The next item I have is a little more robust of an improvement project, so this is to just spruce up our Friendship Plaza area. And what I am asking for, really bringing in front of you, involves projects on kind of three areas. We're looking at improving fixtures. We're looking at adding some public art through a grant through the Georgia Council for the Arts. And then we are adding in some lights. We would like to add in some lights to the area. So we had at the beginning of the year, Kroy Engineering worked with us on some conceptual designs, so these were just renderings to help us understand what we were trying to get towards. One of the things that we are looking at is adding in some swings, again, adding in some art, as you see along the planters there, so those pictures on the left do have a kind of concept design of what the planters look like. In our plaza, we would be switching out some of the existing trees and the planters that are at the end of their natural life. They were planted in the early 2000s and they're nearly dead with some ornamental grasses and then add some picnic tables and some other fixtures just to enhance seating in the plaza, so. And we're not asking you guys for any money. Did I mention that part?
We weren't planning on giving you any.
Well, good. So we're all in agreement here.
And guessing you're looking for the same sort of.
Absolutely. I was just, again, you know, with the idea that we have in mind, would like to proceed with everyone in agreement and in favor. I certainly wouldn't want to do anything that council was not approving of.
Not to prolong the meeting any further, but are we going to be using contractors in any way? Are they doing any of this?
Absolutely. So the lighting contractors, specifically somebody that I sought out through my Main Street Managers page, and so this would be a company that has worked in a number of different cities doing this exact application.
So this is, this is maybe, I guess, so do we require them to be bonded or anything? I mean, if they were to start some of this and not finish it, and, you know, we get somewhere into the project, I assume you'll be over the project and the, but I guess